...in the executive session of Rhode Island General Law 4246-5, subsection 8-2, pertaining collective bargaining litigation, Cheryl D. Stegner versus Tom Smithville, case number PC 2015-163, and National Grid recalcification of PFO property. Let the record show that one vote was taken on each item, and to seal the minutes. So, do you have a second or a second? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mrs. Walensky.
Yes.
Your guy.
Yes. Okay, now we're going into open form. This is not for anybody that's here for the budget. This is just for open form, so anybody for the budget will hold up just for people in there. Okay, so, open form, so with 24246-6. Mrs. Suzanne Breen, would you like to come up and go to counsel?
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Breen here, and I reside at South Lake Village. We, members of the personnel board, are in the process of reviewing certain articles of the town charter and the ordinances where they concern town employees as there are some conflicts. Now, I would like to read a portion of the minutes of the special meeting of the Old Smithfield Town Council meeting held June 27th, 2016, in the Kenton Dean School of Attorney for the Attorney, as recorded on the Indiana Secretary of State's website. Informing the personnel board regarding new high rates, Ms. Alves would like the personnel board to be informed when they are open positions and when employees introduce a schedule, so they may sit in on them to ensure that qualifications are met. Motion was made by Ms. Alves, seconded by Mr. Solley, Mr. Swolinski, and Mr. Busher, and voted 4-0 on a roll call vote that the town administrator inform the personnel board in regards to any new employees' positions in the future, in order for the board to be involved, and also to ask the city solicitor to work on an ordinance to that effect. Now, I have some questions. The motion states any new employee. Does that mean all employees? Does that mean department heads, a finance director, a town board, a parish chief, highway director? Are they included? When it says any, was this motion, Mr. Swolinski, was this motion including all?
Any would reply. Any person collecting a paycheck from the town of Old Smithville.
Okay. Thank you. Does this motion take effect before the ordinance, before an ordinance is passed by the town council?
I'm sorry, did you hear me?
Was this to take effect before an ordinance was written and passed by the town council?
It would take effect after the town council, enforced by the town administrator.
Okay. So, if so, I personally know that we have new department head, because I read about the appointment in the newspaper, and a new administrative assistant to the administrator, which he sent to me in email. And before any town personnel board meeting, I informed the town administrator that we had to be informed when he hired his new administrative assistant, and he did not. Also, the town solicitor was asked to work on an ordinance to that effect. Has that ordinance been drafted? This was June 27th, 2016. If not, what employer would wait 12 months for a report from an employee? The town solicitor was asked several times by our former personnel board chairperson, Renee Rocco, if the ordinance was drafted, and the answer was always in the negative. I know that the four new members of the present town council are probably not aware of this matter, but I am very disappointed that the past town council had five months to act on this, and it never followed through. Now, I implore the town council to request that the town solicitor draft this ordinance before the next town council meeting, and that these motions be done. I remember being on the personnel board when the town hired a fellow, and the town personnel board was not involved. This was supposed to be in effect. Why isn't it in effect?
Um, Suzanne, I might go back a long time.
I know.
Unfortunately, many of us were there at that time.
I know, I said it. Four members would not know. Mr. Swolinski notes, he had five months to request this ordinance, and it never was done.
Well, I can't speak without seeing the evidence.
I know, but I can assure you, I agree with you.
If that's what you're making us, we should be, we should be stopped.
I found out after the town administrative assistant, not only me, but the personnel board, and he had been warned that we had to be informed, and he did not do it. He thought he was exempt.
Like, no one's speaking.
I know, I know, but I'm not informing people. If this was made a motion, and this is 12 months ago, and it hasn't been done, I implore you to have this ordinance for the next town council meeting. I'll check it out.
Suzanne, I apologize. I am the one that came back. So, I always accept the responsibility to not follow through on this. I personally will have a conversation with the council. Can you all in? All right, I apologize to Suzanne. I'm the one returning council member. One of those things, I'll take responsibility for it. I will have a conversation with the solicitor to make sure that this happens post-case, so that it is drawn up, they can come before this council for approval. I do not, I am not fully qualified to play in this town. If I was sitting in reviewing people's applications, I would burn it up. No excuse on my part. This shouldn't have been followed through. I don't sit on any of the personnel boards, because it's not part of the charter for me to do so. So, you have my word that I will speak with the solicitor, have this drawn up and brought before this council, so that we can make sure that the personnel board is involved in all hiring review.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'm here on behalf of several of your taxpayers who live on Old Smithville Road and everywhere that you have a proposed ordinance before the agenda this evening in regards to making Old Smithville Road a one-way road. And, from what I understand, the one-way road was going from 146A down to Sales Hill, so it would be going, Sales Hill Road in that direction. My clients have raised several questions and several concerns that they would like to bring before the town council, and hopefully they will consider. The first concern is that no one's seen this proposed amendment to the ordinance. I'm wondering if this has been published in the Valley Breeze, if this is published somewhere in the town, and if this is available.
Yeah, this is just going to be the first reading.
But it's the first reading allowed to say a proposal that nobody seems to know about.
It's not exactly as you stated, that Mrs. Swolinski's, his ordinance recommendation is not going to be taken in one way. But we're going to get to that, well, very shortly after we've done the open form.
Can I, can I get called back when you get to that?
Sure. Oh, it's going to be a book, right.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eugene Gamache. I reside at 170 Iron Mine Hill Road. I have two items I'd like to talk to you about. First one is, back last fall, they repaved Iron Mine Hill Road. Subsequently, there were burrs put up, up to around Valley View Drive. After that, no burrs were put up. What's happening now is that water comes, water and sand comes into my driveway and then back out, because I did have a berm there before the repaving. Back on October 23rd, I did email Mr. Pendergrass, and he said that the road wasn't completed, the final course would probably be done next week, at which time a berm will be put there. That was last October, and nothing has been done since. And also, the Amber construction installed a containment sock along the road, which is still there. My neighbor came and cut his grass because of the weeds, and had a containment sock that is stopping him from doing that. So, I was just wondering if they're ever going to come back and remove that, and if they're ever going to reinstall the berms on the road.
Is Mr. Pendergrass here? He's right behind you, he's got it.
There's a few more items left on the punch list, and I believe that's one of them with the berm, but I'm going to refer this to the engineers. This project was planned by them, so I'll run that by them and go from there. All right, so if there's a need for the berm, we'll do that. As for the other stuff, they haven't finished cleaning everything else.
That's 170 Iron Mine Hill Road.
Thank you, sir. The last item I have is, back in 2015, I noticed that it was dark outside, so I called National Grid, and I said their light was out. They said, "You don't have a light." Apparently, they removed the light for cost-cutting measures at the time. So, since February of last year, I've been trying to get a light back on the pole, pole 135 on Iron Mine Hill Road. I've been talking to a number of people, emailing, and I've been working with Bobby Monahan, Assistant Town Planner, who has been very good. I certainly appreciate all the work she's been doing, but even she has run into a road like. Apparently, sometime last year, National Grid turned everything over to Prism, and I guess Prism is as tough to get as National Grid. So, I was just wondering if anybody could get my street light back. And that's all I have. Thank you for your time. Thank you, sir.
Before I move on, is there anybody else that has this to go to counsel? Moving on, Old Smithville Town Council, sitting against the Board of License Commissions, holiday sales, phantom fireworks, Eastern Regional LLC. Just give me one second.
Jennifer Flora, I live on the side of Providence.
Steve, right to the mic.
Can I take it to you, Jennifer?
Jennifer Flora, and I live in Providence.
Mrs. Swolinski has a couple of questions for you.
Hi, Jennifer.
Hi.
I was looking at your application to have a firework holiday sales license, which I'm not close to. We just have established hours of operation. Previous to you, in your application, let's not overlook it, it doesn't state the hours of operation. Previous folks that came, companies came before us, they had June 20, where's it? Yeah, hours of operation, but dates, I'm sorry. The hours of operation, we'll get it, but the dates are on there, and I would just, what we've cut for other applicants was June 23rd through July 5th. Does that work for you?
Yes.
All right.
And I believe we're planning on operating from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Yeah, that's fine. So, I'm sorry, I should have said days of operation. So, the time period between June 23rd through July 5th.
Okay.
Right, July 5th.
Right, and a few days before we'll set up.
Yeah. The other question I got, more of a legal question, the solicitor mistake, Leozy. Jennifer filled out the form, but the PCI check was done with Joshua Nielsen. Does that affect this? Is Joshua running to be the manager on staff?
I'm actually the zone manager. I do have the PCI, because I myself am part of it. The zone manager is like the district manager. Joshua is my boss. That's right.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? Everything else seems to be in order. Is there a motion to accept the?
Mr. President, make a motion to approve a holiday sales license for phantom fireworks Eastern Regional under liability. Operation, location, yes, to the, change it to 886 Eddy Dowling, is that correct?
Yeah.
Not 8, not 866.
Yeah.
Excuse me, 886 Dowling, Eddy Dowling. The hours of, the days of operation, from June 23rd through July 5th. Hours of operation, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, that's a motion.
One second. Roll call please.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mr. Walensky.
Yes.
Your guy.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
We have the payment license for J&amp;M Magic Services, IBBA 7621.
So, what kind of a meeting do we have over there?
Uh, just looking to do something simple, maybe two people, who's the guitar, the live music. These people are actually asking for, have some fun.
Does anybody have any other questions for us?
Monica, all indoors.
Um, unless I'm allowed to have maybe something on the patio? No, indoors? You, you tell me. Indoors? Okay.
With the council president and me, we're just discussing with our neighbors. I don't have a problem with it interior-wise. Exterior, if you want to do it, if there's a noise complaint, then we'd have to reassess the licenses. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair.
You want to put someone with the guitar outside?
Right, on a nice, yeah. There's not really many houses running around, so.
Okay, so we have to.
Plus, I'll invite the neighbors, you know, so that will.
Yes, that's a second. Roll call.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mrs. Walensky.
Yes.
Your guy.
Yes. Motion passes. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm just going to make one adjustment on to the agenda. I'm going to move up. Can you get Old Smithville Road? Okay, we're just going to change the order of things real quick. Ordinance Amendment to Section 15-4 roadway traffic signs, and do not enter signs shall be installed to prevent default vehicles from entering Old Smithville Road, ending at the second of Sales Hill Road. This is the first reading. Okay, I will open this up to our public hearing. Anyone has anything to say on this matter?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to open this up for the public hearing.
Second. Any, roll call please.
Mr. Howard.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara.
Yes.
Mrs. Walensky.
Yes.
Your guy.
Thank you, again, council members. Again, this is Attorney Richard Foster from Coventry, Rhode Island. I'm speaking on behalf of several homeowners on Old Smithville Road. And again, I reiterate the fact that apparently, nobody's seen this proposed amendment to the ordinance, and so they don't know exactly what it's going to say. What's appearing on the agenda this evening, it says a do not enter sign is going to be there. So, I'm assuming that if there's going to be traffic, someone's going to be able to enter from somewhere. So, the first question my clients would ask is, is there in fact going to be a do not enter sign? Is this going to be a one-way street? And if it is, in which direction? The second issue here is, if it becomes a one-way road, they're concerned about possibly affecting the businesses that are already existing on the property. They're concerned about emergency vehicles. They're concerned about traffic that would come down on a one-way, on a one-way road. And they're concerned mostly about the entrance off of Route 146A into Old Smithville Road, which is, if you've driven that one, I'm sure you have, it's a little dangerous sometimes to be driving 40 or 50 miles an hour and have to make that turn. So, those are the concerns that my clients have, but the primary concern is the fact that nobody has seen this proposed amendment yet.
Attorney Foster, this process is taking a few turns. Originally, as you're well aware, this council had suggested putting in ski humps. The residents were not happy, because that came back and proposed a one-way. Now, for years, I had been advocating a no-turn from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM from Sales Hill Road onto Sales Hill Road. That did not seem to get traction, nor the support of the residents. It morphed into a do not enter. Now, in essence, if you are on Old Smithville Road, if you live on Old Smithville Road, you come in off of 146A, traffic would be allowed to go both ways. You just cannot turn onto Old, what's being proposed is not to turn onto Old Smithville Road from Sales Hill. So, if you were a resident and you wanted to take a left to go toward Mandeville on Old Sales Hill Road, you'd be allowed to do that. Just traffic cannot come in off of Sales Hill Road. So, it's truly not a one-way, it's just a do not enter.
So, what you're saying is that you would allow the residents of the road to enter, but no one else?
No, no. The only ingress onto Old Smithville Road will be off of 146A. You can ingress and egress in the direction, you just cannot, you just cannot enter, ingress off of Sales Hill Road onto Old Smithville Road.
How is this going to be enforced?
Police enforce it.
So, basically, it's a two-way road for egress.
Correct.
But just the entrance on Sales Hill Road is one, is you can't, you can't get in there.
That's correct.
But the only way to enforce it is if the police are going to be there on a regular basis, I'm assuming.
That's the only way you can enforce anyone's speed laws, or laws. You can't enforce these, that, it's nothing.
The concerns I have is that there's apparently a vehicle maintenance, I think it's Fire Department maintenance, repair shop at the very entrance of Old Smithville Road. And the concern that my clients have would be, instead of now having fire vehicles coming to be repaired, coming in just a short ways on Old Smithville Road, now they would have to come all the way around, and come all the way down there. The other concern would be obviously, any commercial vehicles, oil trucks, delivery trucks, and that nature. And again, and then the concern I was, as I said previously also, is the entrance off of 146A.
That's a 35 miles an hour zone. When you're coming down, it does slow tremendously.
It does slow down.
They don't, but it is. But it did.
The reality is, if you're, it is a 35 miles an hour zone, but it's taking a corner at 35 miles an hour, it's still pretty, pretty dangerous. And the fact is that off 146A, there's probably very few people, unless they're making a turn there, that are doing 35 miles an hour. But my clients are concerned about traffic accidents and blocking the road, the entrance to their road, if they can only come in that one way.
So, Mr. Foster, the residents, people who travel on 46A, are very familiar with that section. It's called the West Acres Exchange. 146A branches off of 146. When you come around that curve, it has to be 900 feet of visibility for Ash House standards. You can see the car way ahead of you when they're taking a turn. If the line of sight is very good over there to take a turn onto 146A, heading north.
Well, I'm just expressing what my clients have said, and you're telling me that the council has already considered other alternatives. Speed bumps and limited, limited access, it's not, it's not a possibility at this point in time?
Well, what you're saying is correct. With this council, initially, the neighbors had accepted the idea of speed bumps, not bumps, there's a difference. And then they had a chance to discuss it, and they realized they did not want it on their road. So, for years now, I've been an advocate of maybe the do not enter between 3:00 and 6:00 PM, 3:00 PM, 6:00 PM, which is within the peak travel times. That would allow people to use it over the weekend, residents, which the train goes both ways. But it is, it is a major safety concern over there. It's, I've been out there, I've been past, the road is, it's a mile west out there on that road, here and there between 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. It's very unsafe.
Mr. Foster, I wish we had the ideal, the answer for this. We're looking at every possible turn to make it a place, there's good people in here on that road, and we want you to be happy, and we want you to be content, but just the road itself, that, you don't have too many roads left at like 25 miles an hour, and sometimes I think it should be even a little less, if we can get just really to some of those turns. But it's not going to happen. I think we've listened to you, we've considered everything. And if it doesn't work out, we can go back to the drawing board, but let's start somewhere.
I think we did have the idea situation with speed bumps, but the rest didn't want to do that one. So, that's why we ended up going with the.
The people that came last time when you weren't here.
That we didn't know about.
I would like to see a survey. I would like to have a survey.
Yeah, we have 40 houses on that road. Make a survey.
We're just going to hold off. So, do you have anything further?
Well, what my, what my clients are.
Yeah, if they want to come up, I'm just going to give them, instead of talking to the table, I'm going to give them an opportunity to come up if you're down.
Thank you.
You can come back. Just keep right to the mic.
Move the chicken going, 36 Old Smithville Road. I would like to know who they are. There's four people on the road, dressed to a service, and now back to one way. Everyone's going to change their mailboxes, talk to the postal service. They put all of them on the other side of the road. That's one thing. Now, all these people that have to do deliveries are going to be coming in one way, which they wouldn't get the road was open. And is that called for the stand-up, to the abuse that it's going to take? All the mailboxes will be moved to the other side of the road.
My Rocco, 45 Old Smithville Road. I've used Acres Exchange. It's not a safe U-turn to get onto 146, to get onto Old Smithville.
Agreed.
By the way, the line of sight is terrible. The traffic from that light from Sales Hill, what's that like, turns green, most people are flying. We have to kind of cross three lanes of traffic, three lanes to get into that right lane. And as soon as you get into the right lane, if they're on your bumper trying to pass you, because you're going too slow, because you have to slow down to make that turn on Old Smithville, it's not an easy turn. It's dangerous to use the Acres Exchange. It's also dangerous to go to make a U-turn at the Sales Hill light, to come back, and it's not an easy solution. And there's multiple problems, and I think a lot of it is caused by the Cedarwood Island not fixing Sales Hill and interchange, and even the Dowling Village complex, where these traffic engineers did not pay attention to the traffic that was, could be created on Old Smithville and even Smithville. All the people that live across Berryfield cannot get out of their streets on a Saturday. So, you have, you had multiple issues that were not addressed by the Dowling Village traffic engineers. How, how? how, how do I, the state not fixing the Sales Hill interchange? So we have some major issues. And we're trying to correct it by putting a do-not-enter sign on one side of the road for Old, Old Smithfield. Doesn't make any sense. We have two big problems that we can't address at this point. And I would not want to take the, the U-turn at the, at the Sales Hill light, nor use the Acres Exchange turnaround again onto Old Smithfield. Somebody's gonna get hurt. And as soon as somebody gets hurt, they would have to change the song.
Mike, I agree with you. The West Acres Exchange in front of the insurance company is very dangerous. You get past that, you start heading off on 146 and the light of sight approaches tremendously. Agreed that cars are going too fast there, that's an enforcement issue. If you recall, had to be maybe thirteen years ago at this point now, when cars were coming off and jumping onto Old Smithfield Road and on the dealership. And I worked with the town of Lincoln to make that, which is, the state of Rhode Island was very accommodating. They made it, they turned the traffic on and we could not turn there. But it was predictable, the traffic, people would think, they think by getting on 99, jumping off 99, coming up Sales Hill Road, taking that turn to Old Smithfield Road, they're saving time. They're not. It'd be better than to say, stay in 146 and all, but they don't. So the problem now has been transferred over to the Westley, Mont Westley side of Old Smithfield Road. And that's why the proposal, like the guy who went back to, I could say do not make it up, do not turn between 3:00 and 6:00 Monday through Friday, yes, there'll be traffic. That's not getting traction. So when, again, when this council suggested speed bumps, the residents don't want the speed bumps. The next step is to make it a do-not-enter. So that would not prohibit the traffic from ingressing, egressing, once they're on that road. As Mr. O'Hara said, this is something that can be revisited. I think the do-not-enter is the lesser, has the least impact on everybody. If you make it a one-way, that's terrible, just can't do that. But if you make it a do-not-enter, it gives the residents the opportunity to go left or right from their property.
But I think the solution should be the State of Rhode Island fixing Sales Hill. And the traffic, like giving you an extra lane to make that right turn onto 146. Which, you know, the lane is too short to make the right turn, it backs up, so that's why people use the shortcut. But if the state would provide an extra turning lane, there's more room to get more cars to make a right turn, get more cars into that intersection, taking a way onto 146. So I don't know why the state is delaying changing the traffic at that lights and get more cars through to make that right turn.
Mike, there are, who's gonna? Mike, there are, there are plans that are being contemplated to widen the traffic, the travel lanes on the right inside, on 146 as well as as we draw on 146. Now, it'll alleviate some of the congestion. But this is a state project.
How long for a break?
Yeah, how long would it take a bridge to go? So, that, that's where we're at. I, I think that making this a do-not-enter or do-not-turn between 3:00 and 6:00 would help. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping to take the progressive steps to see if we can solve this. Because there are a lot of residents in town that use that road. I, for one, use that road. I would not be able to come home on that road, I would have to go around. But to provide safety for the residents...
I just think the solution might be a safety app. That's where the danger is. If someone gets hurt and they can't make that right turn onto Old Smithfield because the traffic has come too fast and they get rear-ended, then I don't know what's the next step if someone gets rear-ended trying to get onto Old Smithfield.
Mike, then I would pose the hypothetical, what happens if someone walks to their mailbox and gets hit by someone trying to pass someone on the road? It's, you, you know the road, you know it's very envious, there's outcroppings, there's bends in the road. It's a dangerous road, it's an old farm road, it's an old road that...
But you're in Acres Exchange, that turnaround, the light is on this area.
Agreed.
There's plenty of accidents, you can't see the traffic coming from that traffic light on Sales Hill. Traffic's moving too fast, you don't have enough time to react, go across three lanes to get into that right light.
I, I agree, that's, that's another issue.
I mean, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with this. I'm not a resident, but let them take the survey and figure this out.
Congressman Hahn? Mr. Rappo. Four months ago, we put a resolution together to go down to the state and ask them to take a look at the Sales Hill Road issue. Apparently, the state, when they get a request like this, mentally it's like glorifying the history of those days. Even Scott, you know, then the bodies have to be appropriated. So I don't know where that is on the list. But at the last meeting, both Mr. Borogod and I, who both voted for us to back down, said speed bumps. The residents said, we're here, did not want them. They thought people would be bothering us. The highway director was bored of going to go in, worth the people, get spotted with speed bumps, naturally with the signage and the answers, you know? So, but yeah, that comment is only for the people in the audience. I guess a commonest name, maybe we should do the survey, get a written survey from the forty residents, and then you can see which way to go.
You know why I disagree with the survey? Is because, in this case, the majority could be wrong, right? The, the right thing to do should be determined by an engineer or a professional, not necessarily the people that, that live there. Just because fifty-one percent of the people want one thing, it doesn't mean that there, that's the way to go, that's, that's the right thing to do. So the solution should come from professionals looking into the matter and not somebody that has, that has people...
But sometimes the professionals don't look at safety. And that's the issue. When they did Dowling Village, they only looked at the safety of the entrances and exits. They didn't look at Hawk Square, they didn't look at the Beef Barn, and there's plenty of accidents.
Yes, they did, and they said there's probably nothing wrong, we'll be fine.
Yeah, I mean, when the experts, they only look at what they want to look at. A lot of times, you cannot trust the results of the traffic engineers. You have to use common sense of the residents. They have to live there, let them make the decision based upon safety. So the survey should say, safety first, give us your input, safety first. And let, let the forty people decide.
Yeah, you can come up, sir.
Dennis Pluff, 927 Old Smithfield Road. Been there twenty-seven and a half years now and been involved in all of these movements and meetings and different proposals to fix the problem. In the twenty-seven and a half years that Denise and I have lived here with our family, we've seen this grow from sleepy little farm road to, we campaigned for years to try and get a traffic study. We finally got one back in the Linda Thibault administration, this has been quite a while now. Of all times, when they finally did the traffic study, the fella came out on Tuesday in November, election day, when the traffic was probably half of its normal, normal rate flow. And even on that day, on that Tuesday election day, we had over a hundred cars an hour. Now, just informal counting that we've done, just sitting at the end of our driveways, at peak times, we're approaching two hundred cars an hour. We have a problem. We've looked at numerous solutions, including the speed bumps, one-ways, do-not-enters on either end, building islands. We're trying to get to a solution which is gonna be the least painful for everyone concerned. And as, and as a director of safety for over ten years where I worked, I'm intimately involved in this, in safety and in the business of safety. And the do-not-enter at Sales Hill Road, after extensive discussion with numerous residents, appears to be the least painful and would provide the highest degree of safety. We've, we've had, most recently, the, the nice lady who delivers our mail has stated, "I'm convinced I'm gonna lose my life on this road." "I've been passed by vehicles numerous occasions going twenty-five miles an hour trying to get to my driveway. I've been saluted with the middle finger and screamed and yelled at more times than I can count by driving twenty-five miles an hour on the road." We have a real issue here and, and I've stated this before, I don't, I don't want to sound too dramatic, but we gotta do something before some of these kids loses their life on the road. And that's gonna happen. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. And we've looked at the speed bumps, we've discussed it extensively. All you're gonna have then is you're gonna have cars racing between one speed bump and another one. And not to mention safety equipment. We do have a, a fire apparatus expert living on one end of the road who's with us here tonight. And the speed bumps would be a real issue with, with heavy fire trucks trying to get somewhere in the case of a real emergency and the ambulance vehicles as well. So, we've looked at and considered and extensively discussed all of the options, or at least all the ones we could think of anyway. And I know no one solution is gonna please everyone. And, and I can only apologize to anyone who's, who's disgruntled with, with, with the one-way or the... Excuse me, it's not a one-way. It's only a do-not-enter at Sales Hill Road. At this point in time, the traffic from Dowling Village is such that it, the traffic issues are more than just three to six or two-thirty to six-thirty or whatever. You've got the Christmas shoppers now and you've got the, the people coming on weekends to go to Lowe's and pick up their lumber and, and we got, and addressing the issue of commercial vehicles as well, which could be an issue. You're gonna have commercial vehicles, we have commercial vehicles now. We have an issue with commercial vehicles cutting through that road going south to north. We've got full-size concrete trucks, you know, forty, fifty-foot-long rip-debuses, tractor-trailers, all having no business on our road whatsoever. And I know because I followed a number of them. I, I think they have garments or GPS is telling them to cut through there. And, and that's the situation. I wish we could come up with a solution to please a hundred percent of the people, a hundred percent of the time. I'm not sure we can. Let's make no bones about it, the problem is the light at Route 146. And until the State of Rhode Island designs an intersection or a flyover or, or a full global leave and has to take land by eminent domain, there are sticky issues on, on, on every side of this. The issue is the light, and as long as the light's there, cycling and commuters are trying to go north and south on 146, you're gonna have the problem. So we're looking at the least painful way to address it. And we think we have it and, and I, I beg you to implement as we speak. Thank you very much.
William Fry, 810 Old Smithfield Road. I've lived there over thirty-seven years, I know what the traffic does. I know what the traffic is out in the world, I drive trucks for a living, I see it every day. Traffic's not gonna change. Now, the other problem is, what are you gonna do about the traffic coming in off of 146A early in the morning when people can't get through the light? We get a lot of traffic going the other direction. They don't remember that. I do, because I'm home sometimes in the morning and I see a lot of traffic speeding down that road going the other direction. Now, what are you gonna do about controlling that? That's the other point.
Sir, human nature would like to be able to control everyone. But some people have no common sense. They'll wait until they're almost on your posterior to stop. Sometimes they don't stop. If we could change mankind, it'd be nice, but we can't. And, and it'll continue. I, I don't think there is any finite answer.
Now, that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is the people early in the morning that are going south to Providence, the road's backed up, the road's backed up. They come back, do the turnaround to get through, to beat the light. Which is the same situation we've got going the other direction.
But I don't think that turnaround is as heavy as the night time.
No, it's not, but it's still there. And you still have a lot of speeding through there with the school bus coming out. That's the other issue. Where's the school bus gonna go? They have to change the route. School buses have to change, mail has to change.
How about trash?
Trash, trash goes down that way sometimes. If they have to go do a stop and make a unload and come back, they go this way. There's certain things that have to be checked in, into one of us. I know it's no perfect situation. But like Mr. Pacheco said, you're gonna have a lot of traffic going across the cul-de-sac. How long is that cul-de-sac gonna hold up? Those fire trucks have to go that way. Emergency vehicles go down to the garage, get work done. All the freight trucks that go in there to make deliveries all have to go that way. And they all have to cross that cul-de-sac. Now, the last time I was here for a meeting, the speed bumps were suggested. Mr. Fendergrass suggested, requested it, you guys discussed it, and that group also agreed on it at that time. Said they were all in favor of it, then all of a sudden they changed their minds. That's the only thing I have to say. Gentlemen, I would like to do it this way.
Chief Reynolds, I can even put you on the spot, but do you have an opinion on this or do you do...
Please.
What's that?
What was your question?
Do you have an opinion on the, on how to handle the situation in favor of a one-way? Uh, excuse me, do-not-enter, or would you suggest something up there under that?
I think several ideas out there. I think the role of that. Personally, I am an advocate of the speed bumps, but I get it. I understand lives and citizens, residents would not likely pay as far as a retirement and a way to control it to some extent, that would be my recommendation.
Is there anybody else?
Dallas Plough, Providence Pike. One thing that I think should be done is, Mr. Gonzalez, I think you should contact Smithfield, we spoke about this this morning, Brayton Road and Providence Pike. They had a problem over there, same thing, with people traveling, cutting through, going to Fidelity. They put a sign over there, do-not-enter between, it's like seven o'clock and nine o'clock. They also had a cruise apothecary over there. To be perfectly honest with you, it's like, that to me, it's like, this, this problem here, it's not gonna, it's not gonna get resolved anytime soon. Because I myself was in traffic over there a week and a half ago. And for about twenty-two minutes, when I got off of, off of 99, all the way to the light at 146. And I gotta tell you something right now, it's frustrating, it really is. And like I told you this morning, it's like, on 146A, at the Old Smithfield Road cutoff, you don't have a third lane to get over. So you have is four feet, two inches. I got out and measured it, alright? And I'm gonna tell you something right now, that's gonna be one dangerous area to be, to go in and out of. And it's like, most Smithfield police and fire, they better be equipping themselves with body packs. Because I'm gonna tell you something, you're gonna have some deaths over there because of that particular thing. Because just past that, you can see, get into Walmart, you've got a breakdown lane or shoulder lane, alright? And people are using that, that's fine. But to get in and out of Sales Hill, I mean, Smith, uh, Old, Old Smithfield Road, there's nothing. And it's only like about sixteen feet wide, if that. And for two cars, if somebody is driving an Escalade and somebody is driving a Ford F-250, they're not gonna make it, one's gonna have to get out and then the other guy's tail is gonna be sticking on on 146. Alright, 146A. And it's like, it's gonna be a mess, literally a mess, alright? The only thing which I would personally suggest, what I would suggest would be, at the entrance of, at Old Smithfield and Sales Hill, do not hit the sign from two o'clock to six o'clock. Do it like they did right up the street over there. But before you do that, do the research, contact, have the ODPW guy, contact the ODPW guy in the police department, how they did it, that they enforced it the correct way and it seemed to be, it resolved the problem, alright? You know, you can go over there and see it, you got the two signs still up there. But, in all honesty, it's like, this is gonna be detrimental to the people who live on this road. Because they pay taxes like everybody else does in this town and they can't even use the street in which they live on. Alright? And I feel bad for them. You know, I got my own headaches over here on Providence Pike and Speedy. All right, and here I am over here talking on behalf of them, knowing what they're going to be going through. Because it's going to be a problem that they're not going to, they're not going to be able to, they'll be able to fix it. The only way they're going to be able to fix it is when that gentleman came up here and said, when DOT turns around and does the modification to one forty-six, but then you're going to see lawsuits on top of lawsuits because then you're going to end up having, you know, Anka Subaru being sued in State of Rhode Island because their walls are going to get all messed up over there. You know, the whole bottom line of it is, the only way to turn around and really truly resolve it, there was one person, I think it was like Mr. O'Hara said, enforcement. All right, now, I realize the police department is supposed to be short-staffed. Two cruisers on the road during every shift. One, I'm just saying, one at Eddie's Market and one up at Wendy's. The whole bottom line of it is, if there's an emergency down at Mattery Road, the guy at Wendy's is crossing the town and going to Mattery Road, that leaves this particular area wide open. They don't have the people on the road, just like over here on Providence Pike for doing the speeding. They can get called out. Chief can turn around and call them out to go to another location or dispatch can call them out to go to another location. They're not going to be available to turn around and be sitting on Old Smithfield Road twenty-four-seven. And is that what you need? That's what you need because that's the only way it's going to be enforced. I know, twenty-one years living on Providence Pike. The only way you're going to stop the traffic, you got a cruiser over there, eight hours a day, shooting them with the gun, pulling them over like they've done. All right, and that's the only way. But if they come over here once or twice a month or three times, four times, five times a month, they're going to end up doing exactly what they wanted to. All right, and it's like, it's going to be the same thing on Old Smithfield Road. You're going to put the, you're going to put the do not, do not enter sign from, let it be two o'clock to six o'clock. All right, but that's going to be seven days a week. All right, then you're going to have to have somebody to enforce this seven days a week. Now, you can go and park and I can guarantee, I already spoke to somebody in the back room over there, you park on the other side of Smithfield Road going towards the Honda dealership area. You park your car over there, all right, and you count during that time span between two o'clock and six o'clock, I guarantee you're going to see violators. Chances are, cops won't be around. Cops are going to be elsewhere. You can't expect the cops, like it was said, you know, even in the Valley Reeves, and Mr. Butterguy, you said that, you can't have the cops anywhere twenty-four-sevens like. All right, these people have to realize that. Just like I have to realize that on Providence Pike. What's it going to take? An accident, somebody gets killed, then somebody will be done. My suggestion to them would be, don't wait for four years or five years or six years. Have a call for traffic study right now. The guy's name is Robert Rocchio. Contact him. Have a meeting. Have him come over here. Tell him that you're demanding. Go to, go to your politician over there that lives on Follett Street. He's got pulp. That's how I ended up getting the traffic study over here on Providence Pike. I went to John Tisone. All right, go to the politician. Use him. All right, and it's like, because that's the only way you can get satisfaction. And that's God's honest truth. And it's like, because you can turn around and put signs on top of signs, unless you're going to have the police officers there twenty-four hours a day, you know, it's not going to work. It's not going to work. I'll tell you right now, I mean, I don't want to sound morbid, but you're going to have deaths over there, people coming in and out because forty miles an hour, fifty miles an hour, they're coming up one forty-six. All right, and they're not going to slow down, so you can pull into Old Smithfield Road because they don't care about you. And if you've got somebody on the left side of you, they can't push over to get into the high-speed lane, somebody's going to get whacked on this deal. All right, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Henry Hero. I live at eleven-eighty-one Old Smithfield Road. And I've lived there for about fifty-five years. It would take a few years where I lived in Warren. So I've lived there a long time. So I've seen that road be from a great road where you could walk down the street and kids could ride their bikes to a place now that you don't even deal with your dog loose because it's going to get run over on the street. I'm also the fellow who owns the fire truck company at the end. We do fire apparatus repairs and they're in the street. Doesn't really bother anybody who licensed by the town. And so we have legitimate business there. None of our day business really have any problems because it's a big fresh driveway that would come in and out. I'm a little bit conflicted because not only do I own a business there, but I also live there. So the quality of life really kind of sucks between three o'clock in the afternoon and six, seven, especially when CBS gets out, when traffic's coming up north on one forty-six. It's particularly between three and six. After that time, it kind of drops off dramatically. You know, the roads picked up a lot of traffic over the years, especially from Dolly Village, but nowhere near like three to six almost every day of the week where you can't even, don't even let your dog out. And I had my grandkids live right in front of me and, you know, and I was a kid, you know, we were, I moved there when I was ten years old. And, you know, my mother, father never worried about us going down the street on our bikes. I wouldn't even deal if my grandkids go in. We don't even like to have them cross the street without having to tell them. I mean, that's not a very good quality of life, so. So I live there. I own a business there. I am concerned about the do not enter all the time and I had this discussion with my Davis because now I'm going to be diverting, you know, fire truck business coming down the road from the north end. Might be tow trucks towing something in, delivery trucks coming down that way. So I am concerned about that. Certainly in the three to six o'clock period, most business is almost done by that time of day. It's not going to be a hardship. But we do have to do something with the street as far as the traffic goes. Now, Pacheco said, we back off the road. I lived on top of the hill and I couldn't see the bit of that traffic. That wouldn't bother me at all either. But when your house sits right on that road every day and you're watching that people come down and you look at the plates, there might be some town residents on there, but I'll tell you what, I would, by the weeks paid, the six or seven out of ten cars are all Massachusetts plates. Okay? They're not town residents that are using that road. So, it's all out-of-state plates, people coming out of CBS and everybody's in a rush. So, it's a quality of life issue as well. So I'd just like to have the council give that some consideration. I do like your proposal to try the three to six better than the full-time. It would certainly solve my problem with having the divert tractor trailers and heavy trucks down the street. But I also have, I'm conflicted with the quality of life issue too because the quality of life is not very good most afternoons on that street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Dusky?
As the council president knows, we have been in many meetings about this issue. We've been at the State House. I've been before the chief and I have been before the State Traffic Commission. We know there is an issue. And it's already been stated that, you know, the ultimate solution is improvement at Sales Hill and one forty-six. And that is in the traffic improvement plan. And as those things go, we are encouraged to understand currently that while in the past, the traffic improvement plan was, yeah, okay, it's in there, but things moved up and down and it really wasn't as deliberate a plan, let's say, as folks are now trying to make. And the improvement of the light cycling and lane conditions isn't the tip and it's relatively close to the top. So does that, what year will that happen? I can't tell you that. But I think we can have far more certainty today that something will be happening by the state at Sales Hill. Not, you know, the ultimate solution that some might think, but something to improve the traffic form. So while we talk about this, my consideration continue to be to try to pressure that condition to be improved. In the meantime, you know, people have communicated to my office and as already been stated, called me, letters, whatever the circumstances. I am concerned about the increase in right turns from one forty-six A to Old Smithfield Road Southbound. I have to tell you that I think that we are looking for trouble there. I still think that there's a place in this for the speed hump idea. Again, I'm not going to satisfy everybody. And my suggestion at this point would be to use a combination of the tools that are available to us. I think that the limited hours do not enter is an easy.